Okay, at this time, I'd like to call the special section of the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Public Utilities to order. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Gonzalez here. Groneman.
Here.
Haley.
Present.
Waits.
Here.
Mulvaney Henry.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
You have a form.
Okay, uh, we're here today to discuss with our search firm timelines and that for the search for the general manager. Are they present?
Abby went to go see and to check online because obviously they're not in the room.
Do we want to, are they online? I don't know. I can't tell if that participant is them or not. It's, they just listed themselves.
Can you ask them?
They raise their hand if they're present?
If C-Biz is present online, can you raise your hand?
Uh, this is not C-Biz.
Okay.
Sound like Taya.
This might be.
There they are. They're there. They're there.
Good morning.
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 Everyone. We've been on one of my colleagues as well. We'll be joining us, but I'm Rohan Pita Party. Pleasure to meet everyone today.
Nice to meet you.
Apologies for moving a little bit slower than I normally am. I was in a car crash earlier this summer and I'm still in recovery for it from it, hence the cane. So I'm doing a lot better than I once was, but not the, uh, not how I plan on spending my summer. I'm okay. Thank you.
We'll wait for your, your, uh, second party to show up. I don't do introductions.
That'll be perfect. And I've got this handout for you today if y'all would like to, or if you want to suggest and pass these around.
It looks like she just wants. I can give one to Chris for the record.
Oh, wonderful.
Done. Is there enough for everybody?
If someone wouldn't be able to go grab Jess, I think she might just come inside.
Let's see how it's gonna get her, so.
I asked, uh, Chris, I said, uh, hold, uh, seven minutes lunch since you're taking our lunch break. He said, no.
Yeah, that's the same.
Hey, I told Chris if they wanted to have it at our offices, we'll, we'll bring in lunch.
See?
They said they wanted to have it here. Next time we'll make sure there's lunch. People make better decisions on full stomachs.
Hopefully it won't last too long through lunch.
Certainly. No, we'll, we'll get you all out of here by noon, certainly.
That's what I had anticipated was it looked like it was gonna last about an hour.
All right. Well, that's everybody on our end.
Okay.
Wonderful. Well, thank you all for being here today. As mentioned, I'm Rohan Pita Party. I lead C-Biz's nonprofit and social impact executive search practice along with my colleague Jessica Galbren. Um, we're very excited to be here today and to get us started, I'd love if we could just go around the table and have everyone introduce themselves.
That was Jessica.
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 You want me to start?
Perfect.
Angela, you go first. Angela Lawson, attorney. Mary Gonzalez, I'm on the board.
Stevie Waits.
Brett Parker.
David Haye.
Rose Mulvaney Henry.
And Tom Groff.
And they're, they're the four. They're the decision makers.
We know who they are. Beautiful. Well, thank you all so much for being here. We're really excited to get started on this, uh, you know, really interesting and important project. Uh, you know, Bill obviously has had a great legacy here. I mean, over 40 years of service and certainly we want to build off that while at the same time considering what new challenges may lay ahead for the BPU and, and what might that new model of leadership thus require? Um, you know, within the social impact practice, you know, we really enjoy the work that we do because it's not just about dollars and cents. It's also about the larger impact that we're trying to have here, which is getting power and water to people at as affordable a cost as possible. Um, you know, I think the history of the BPU is really wonderful. Uh, you know, group of citizens getting together and then making that investment in, um, you know, their own wellbeing and their own control over their ability to have access to the resources that they need. So we're really honored to, uh, be selected as y'all's partner for this project. And, and this is really our kickoff meeting, um, to kind of get us started. Um, and so if you look at the agenda and key outcomes here on the handout, we've just done a quick round of introductions. We'll go over our search philosophy and the phases of the search process very quickly, touch on the candidate journey, um, and then make sure y'all have questions answered. As far as our key outcomes here, one of the first ones I really want to highlight here is trust. Our best searches are ultimately partnerships. We're bringing our expertise in search and talent and evaluation. Y'all are bringing the expertise in the BPU and what this community ultimately needs. And so we believe that by sharing that expertise, really collaborating, co-designing a strategy for finding the right executive, we believe that that'll help us ultimately deliver a process, um, that will lead to a successful outcome. The other piece of that trust is the communication that goes on over the course of the process. Part of what you're looking to do when you work with the search firm is take certain responsibilities off of your plate, right? We're trying to avoid a situation where every single board member is interviewing every single candidate we have for this role. But what we want to do is make sure that we can act effectively as yours, your eyes and ears through the process. So understanding what you'd like to see in a candidate, understanding what separates the good from the great with a candidate, um, as well as making sure that this remains a convenient option through the process and we don't have to keep, yeah, you know, putting time on calendars and having all of the logistics involved in, in making a decision through here. Um, we'll conclude with a couple of action steps as we head towards the, the remainder of the process. Um, but if everyone's, uh, ready to go ahead and, and get started, uh, we can dive in. So you can follow along with your handout. Uh, but at the beginning, I wanted to just briefly talk about our recruitment approach. Um, so as I mentioned, within the social impact practice, we really believe that that impact piece matters. Um, you know, we're not just talking about, uh, you know, breaking even at the end of the day, you know, we're often in organizations where we have a double bottom line, where there's a need to be in the black, but there's also a need to make sure that that larger impact is also being met. And especially for an executive role, knowing that the key role of the executive is going to make sure that that strategic plan moves forward and that impact is delivered. We really want to make sure that we understand that organizational impact. So as we get, uh, uh, into our conversations with BPU staff, with you as the board, we're really going to start at that impact level. At the 10,000 foot view, what's going on with the BPU? What are the main challenges ahead? Um, and you know, what kind of leader will it take to navigate those? Um, from there, we're going to kind of narrow down the needed skills and fluencies. Um, I know we have some education folks in here. I used to be an educator. And so I think about, you know, breaking down knowledge, skills and competencies. What does someone need to know? What do they need to be able to do? What kind of concepts do they need to be familiar with? Additionally, what that'll ultimately, uh, govern is our evaluation process. So if we determine that one of the key skills needed in this role is, uh, public speaking, presentation to an external audience, that we want to think about how we might evaluate that. Is this something where we would look at someone's work history and say, you were in a role where you were, you know, in front of people a lot and that's good for us? We can assume that you have that capability, or we might say, we want to see you speak, you know, we want to see you actually give a presentation to, a group here assembled or another group of our choosing. And so we'll really think about that. And then ultimately with that really strong understanding of, you know, where the organization is headed and what skills need to be brought to the table, we want to go find talent that's aligned to that. So, uh, that's a little bit about the approach that we'll use through our process. And if you'd like to flip to the next page, um, I just want to kind of, at the largest view outline what the entirety of our process is going to look like. So we're currently, uh, in the late August project launch stage. So what we're doing here is kind of getting our ducks in a row, figuring out who we're talking to. Um, in the background, we are plugging into the strategic plan and the org chart, making sure we really understand what's happening with the organization. Um, and ultimately this is going to culminate in, uh, the crafting of our search strategy, the crafting of a brand new job description for this position. Um, and basically everything else we need in order to formally launch the search. And what I mean by launch the search is actually start talking to people. So at this stage, we're still, uh, researching, developing our strategy. We're not doing any outreach yet. Um, from there, we'll launch the outreach. We'll begin talking to candidates and I'll, I'll get into that process more in just a second. Um, but then the next big thing that we'll bring everybody back for is that second, uh, folded item, that early October candidate presentation. That's when after, uh, you know, spending about a month in the marketplace, talking to candidates, um, evaluating them, we'll bring back our highest flyers to this board for review. And what that conversation will also include is a set of, uh, search observations. So what are we hearing from candidates that we're talking to? Are we finding that the experience is a little bit lower than what we were looking for? Are we finding that some of the candidates we're most excited about are, have compensation expectations, uh, that are outside of what we're looking for? Now, you know, we, we understand that the board is under certain constraints as far as what they can do with things like that, but certainly we want to make sure the board is aware of that information. Um, and so that's what part of that candidate conference, excuse me, candidate presentation will entail. From there, we move folks through higher, uh, levels of evaluation. Um, and, uh, again, I'll touch on exactly what those evaluations might look like in a second, but moving up through the layers of EFL's evaluation system, coming all the way back up to the board level. Um, from there, finalists will go through background checks, references, any performance tasks or assessments that we'd like to use makes them feeling really great. Ahead of an ideal start date, uh, I do, we're looking at after Thanksgiving. Um, knowing that Mr. Johnson's targeting retiring at the end of the year, we've discussed with staff that, you know, it's not ideally necessary to have an overlap, but thinking about the timeline in a way that would be conscious, um, as we wrap up this search. Um, let me go ahead and pause there. That is kind of the, the long arc of the timeline, how we're going to spend the next 90 to 120 days. Um, in a moment, we'll get into what some of the specific steps in between are, and in particular, what are going to be the responsibilities and expectations of this group? And what are going to be the responsibilities and expectations of the C-Biz EFL team over the course of the process? Any questions?
Yes. Right. Yep. No, you stated that, uh, you understand we are under some constraints. So where did you get that understanding?
I just mean in, in general, you know, if a, a candidate says that they would take this position, but they want to be paid a million dollars a year, the board may not necessarily be able to just be like, okay, great. Thanks.
Yeah.
Not referring to, you know, some of the specific constraints under the, you know, government of Kansas and, and the unified government, but just in general that, you know, an organization may not be able to compared to a, a private company to, you know, set the salary for a position like this.
I was, I was making sure that, you know, you were providing this information that, uh, you weren't providing this information that you'd received from already, you had already received from us.
No, no, no.
So we're providing our information to you.
Absolutely. We, we, we think there. And likely what we'll do in this, uh, research and strategy phase is, um, consider what an appropriate compensation range would be based on, you know, where Bill has been at, what the board is actually able to do. Um, cause on our end too, we find that, um, you know, though there's room for, you know, negotiation and people being valued what they're worth. If there's anybody that is wildly outside the scope of what this organization could do, we typically don't go further with those kinds of candidates. We would hate to bring someone in front of y'all that you all get really excited about. That seems great. And then we find out that there's just no way that we can get to a deal with this person because they, you know, they're coming from.
We had that last time.
Yeah. So we, we find it just makes things clear, you know, uh, it's often something that we discuss at the very front of the process. You know, if your expectations are a little bit north of what we're talking about, if it's in a range that we think we could accommodate that or that they might be willing to continue the conversation, we're happy to include that. But again, if you're really way out the range that we're talking about, you know, it's not worth anyone's time to go further in the process. Mr. Haley, you had a question?
And Mr. Pita?
Pita Party.
Pita Party.
Ain't no party like a Pita Party party because a Pita Party party don't stop. So you can remember.
Am I as old as saying, why, how will we find the metrics for outcome? I mean, in other words, what we're all looking for in the ideal, if you, if you're a candidate or candidates, when those will be or what point along the timeline, might we better, uh, drill down and flesh that out? Of course, you spoke to, uh, desire to see the bottom line, but also other metrics that there might be in places. Where might that be in the process?
So, so that'll happen here in the project launch, uh, uh, phase. So we'll use a little bit of time to collect information from the whole group here. But what we'll set up following this conversation are one-on-one conversations with you all, um, to get your perspective on what's needed in the role. We have a standardized set of domains that we'll address across all of those conversations. So it's not as though the conversation we have with one person is going to be wildly different from somebody else, but focusing on, uh, that kind of recruitment approach once again. So we'll start with questions related to organizational impact. So asking you all, what do you see as the big challenges ahead for the BPU? What makes the BPU special? You know, ultimately what is the, the impact that the BPU has on the people that it serves? Then getting into, you know, thinking about the leader at the helm of the BPU, thinking, uh, at multiple levels. So we'll think first of all, at the functional level. Um, so for a role like this, for example, without thinking of any of the higher order nuances or any of the more strategic things, you have to manage people. You have to be the leader of this entire organization, right? And there's some functional pieces there that we'll evaluate that you will either have or you don't, right? Have you managed people in the past? Have you managed a budget at what level, at what size? These are things that we can, you know, concretely evaluate. Then we start getting up into people's skills, you know, uh, what kind of personal, uh, leadership style do you employ? What kind of communication style do you employ? That's where some of our conversations with staff will be really valuable where, you know, if we hear from staff, like we don't want a micromanager, we don't want someone who's going to be breathing down our necks. And we hear from a candidate that they're saying, you know, my style of management is extremely hands-on and I like to be CC'd on every single email. These are things that we'll tease out, getting all the way to critical thinking, that most strategic, um, order. So that'll happen in those individual conversations. We'll bring that all together. And really the way that we'll anchor that is in that newly created job description. Um, cause that's for us, um, you know, a market facing document meant to also make people excited about the role. Um, you know, that it'll include selling points, that'll include some messaging about, you know, what actually is the opportunity here beyond just that there's a vacancy that needs to be filled. Um, but you know, using that also for candidates to be able to sort of self-screen. We're, we're saying, we're looking for this functional experience, this strategic experience. Is this you? Um, and then, you know, as with, uh, any search, you know, I'm sure there'll be candidates that we talked to, we're like, so you actually don't have these, but thank you for your interest in the position. Um, but we try to make it as clear as possible.
Great. Thank you.
Wonderful. Um, this is definitely a little heavy information download piece upfront. And so thank you all for bearing with us as we just, uh, kind of keep going through this. Um, the next piece I want to, oh, go ahead.
We go into that, having this, you know. You talked about a new job description.
Hmm.
I, I, I see, uh, our, uh, legal attorney over there probably cringing, uh, because, uh, they're, the general manager has restraints, uh, determined by our charter ordinance.
Hmm.
Okay, uh, that was not mentioned, uh, uh, that.
So we, we've received that, uh, the charter and the requirements in there. And so we'll have a section in the, uh, new job description that'll say, you know, these are kind of the hard and fast things where like, you know, we, regardless of your other experience, we cannot consider you if you don't have, I think it's five years of management experience in utilities, seven years, experience total, a few other considerations. So those will be included.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Um, again, you know, we want to make it easy for candidates as well to, you know, kind of self-determine whether they're a good fit for a role. Where if we can say, hey, you know, we're not going to talk to you, you know, we don't want to see your resume unless you have at least met these things. Um, and so that ideally gives folks an opportunity to do just that. Um, really quickly touching on the candidate journey, which is at the bottom of the second page here. So this is typically what a candidate would experience going through a search like this. Um, so the first step on their end would be they, they see a public posting, whether on the BPU website, the C-Biz website, LinkedIn, some of the various additional sources that we may use to post this, certain professional associations, uh, professional communities, things like that. They send us their resume. Um, we review the resume for some of that functional experience. Um, the next step is a, usually a functional screen with Jessica. Um, and Jessica's really our, our first cut. And so she's looking at some of those hard and fast functional considerations. So again, on management or budget experience, you know, if you've only managed one person, even if you've got all this other great experience, you're probably not ready to step up to the GM position, things like that. If you've, you know, only ever managed a budget of a hundred thousand dollars, you're probably not, you know, ready to, to step into something like that. Um, the next cut moves folk from Jessica to me where I do a 60-minute, what we call a comprehensive interview. This is a much more traditional leadership interview where because we've addressed some of these functional considerations around what is your expertise in the energy sector? What utility experience have you played in? I'm not going to repeat any of those questions. Anyone I'm talking to, I feel good that at a minimum, you know, they've met the functional requirements for this role. So then my questions start to turn into some of these higher order questions around like, what kind of leader are you? What kind of change manager are you? Um, you know, how do you deal with adversity? Um, and a lot of these questions are going to be informed by the, uh, conversations we have with you all individually. So in those questions, you know, in those individual sessions, we'll really invite a level of candor. Um, you know, you'll only be speaking to us, uh, you know, we're really interested in, you know, your role as a board member. What are you looking for? What do you want to see? We want to hear it. Um, and so we'll capture that information. Um, from there typically is when we do that candidate presentation. So if you think of between stages three and four, that is when we would, uh, take whoever we've interviewed up to that point, um, bring them back to this group and discuss, uh, at that candidate presentation. Now, another thing about our process is that it's rolling. So we might have some folks who, once we open the application, some folks might be at stage one, some folks might be at stage four. From our perspective, you know, that's completely fine because if we have someone that y'all are interested in and that candidate is ready to proceed, then, you know, in our mind, there's no reason to wait. The only things that we'll consider are, um, as we, uh, keep the funnel open, if for whatever reason, we feel like there is a caliber of talent we're not getting to, or that there are people we have not gotten to yet. Um, you know, and then these are conversations that'll be ongoing. Once you start getting into two, three months of having the application open, we found that in our searches, you know, typically it's very rare for a high-flying candidate to come in at the very tail end of the process, especially if you've, you know, baked a good process, you should be shaking the trees so that you're at least hearing of these people. Maybe people are, you know, not interested in opportunity or not looking to, uh, you know, leave their current role, but it's just, especially for a role like this, that's going to be senior level enough, that's going to have some very particular parameters. It's, you know, in our mind, it will, we'll continue to keep the door open, but it'd be unlikely that after three months of searching, we just, hear from someone who's unconnected to this board, to this community who is a wildly great fit. But so we'll keep that up in the process. Um, and then stages four and five are really what we consider finalists. Um, so that would be a client interview, um, which will, uh, kind of discuss how we want that to look. If we want to do a smaller segment of the board first, or if we want to just have, uh, a set of finalists who would do interviews with the entire board. This is also where if we wanted to do a more complicated assessment or a sophisticated performance task, like a presentation, um, you know, uh, you know, obviously one of the responsibilities of this, uh, uh, position is, um, certain formal presentations and communications to the board. Um, so we might be interested in seeing what some of that formal writing looks like. We might say, hey, uh, you know, write us a memo, uh, telling us about, you know, we can prepare some information. Here's where we also as big nerds like to, you know, really get into the science of evaluation and assessment. We have a history of developing bespoke activities. Um, if that's appropriate, if we feel like there's something that we want to test specifically here. And then of course we have access to, uh, suites of, uh, professional assessments, evaluations, personality tests, things like that. Um, so likely what we'll do is using the results of the conversations that we're all having here, we'll make recommendations back to the board on what that process should look like. We would say, hey, everybody said communication is really key, so we need the communication exercise. Or, um, you know, we have used personality assessments in the past and just to have a common language for the candidates, we want everybody to have a, a personality assessment. So those are things that we'll consider. Um, uh, yeah. And then, uh, that last stage is when we would also do references and things like that, background check. Um, you know, certainly, uh, for reasons like this, there's a level of scrutiny that we would check off with, with those finalists, uh, there. Any questions about the candidate journey?
Not so much about the journey, but underline in your determinations that you do, uh, do you ever take an opportunity to look at the infrastructure where the candidate would be? In other words, some of the surrounding, uh, pre-existing personnel or that's going to augment or work with member? That is to understand what they'll have to work with. I mean, I know that goes beyond the scope of their immediate ability and personality and what they do. But sometimes an organization or the structure pre-existing or to be developed might, um, might be determinative of, uh, a better success.
Yeah. So that's, that's typically something we would address. Uh, depending on how some of the research shakes out, either in the functional screen or the comprehensive interview, that would be part of, kind of what we would dive into with a candidate is what does your current reporting structure look like? Um, you know, what teams are you and resources are you using to be able to get this done? Um, especially in the nonprofit and social impact sector, um, you know, we know that some people aren't often coming from, super resource-rich environments. And so it's very telling for us that, you know, were you able to have success with a team of one and, you know, $10,000 versus were you able to have success with a team of 300 and, you know, 10 million? Does that answer your question?
It does. So at what point though, does that take it into consideration? What point are you looking at the, uh, the broader structure than just the individual that we're, we're applying here? Is there a point where you, no, I mean, we have some component departments here that, you know, um,
We would likely, yes.
On our GM success or, or not.
If I'm understanding you correctly, Mr. Haley, we would likely just spotlight that as an individual data point associated with a particular candidate. So, you know, hey, we like candidate X because the organization that they come from, the structure really mirrors the BPU. Or, you know, that might be, uh, something that separates a good from a great candidate where it's like these two candidates about the same experience, about the same skillset. Um, but you know, the organization that this person's coming from, they have a really robust, you know, reporting team. They're doing all kinds of crazy smart metering stuff over there. And so they might have, you know, part of the piece there. The other thing is, you know, a good candidate is going to be an effective storyteller here. And something like that would be a, a part of the story for why they make sense for the BPU. You know, they should be able to explain to this group why, where they're coming from, the, uh, you know, achievements they have there, the success they had there would translate here. All right. Last piece of information to download, the third page here. Um, so it's a little bit of the same information, just presented slightly differently. This is again, kind of overview of how the search will be conducted. Um, but broken into firm responsibilities and search committee responsibilities, which will take here to mean kind of board and staff responsibilities. Um, so in the strategy and research phase, we'll be conducting these stakeholder interviews. We'll be doing the needs analysis, crafting our strategy, updating the description. Um, on your all's end, what that really looks like is participation. So participating in those calls with us, sharing your thoughts candidly, um, and honestly, um, and then with staff, we've been working on some of the document sharing, making sure that we're, uh, aware of the goals involved in the strategic plan, the budget. Um, just to be able to answer questions that we might get from candidates, um, so that we don't have to keep going back and forth and, uh, bother Abby anymore than we're already doing. Um, in terms of the deliverables at the end of that phase, so we'll have, uh, a discussion around search strategy, what we want that candidate journey to look like. Um, and then that updated job description. Um, once that's approved, we'll also make sure you all have all of the information you need to be referral channels for this role yourself. Um, certainly we invite any referrals you have from your personal networks, but of course, um, other people will know that you serve on this board. And when the search is available, names may come to you. Everything's going to flow through us. Somebody reaches out with a resume, you send it to us. Someone you know gives us a referral, you send it to us. What we're also able to do then is if needed, be the bad guy or be delicate. If there's a referral you'd like to pass along and, maybe this is not somebody that you feel really confident about, you know, we're happy to, uh, you know, sign them off on our behalf and make sure that personal relationships are presented. Um, in phase two, um, that's really sourcing and evaluation. So on our end, we are talking to candidates, you know, we are, you know, calling, we call it smiling and dialing. Um, you know, we're on email, we're on LinkedIn. Again, we'll look in some of those professional associations that we may want to target for something like this. Um, and as well as any other, um, uh, you know, sources that we want to use. Um, so as we're evaluating, we'll continue to provide updates to this group. Um, that's one of the things that we'll discuss, uh, as a group in a second is, you know, what update structure and cadence would be best for the board? Um, you know, knowing that, you know, the board is regulated differently, uh, uh, and also that, you know, we want to make sure that you all are kept out of the weeds. You know, we don't need you all interview, uh, you know, reviewing individual resumes, things like that. You know, that's why we're here. But how can we make sure that you all have that trust, that things are ongoing, you know, challenges are being addressed and that everything is being handled professionally? And so we'll talk about that more in a second. Um, you know, in phase two, really what's required from you all, once again, is that feedback. In phase two, we'll actually be talking about candidates. And so it's one thing to kind of discuss them in the abstract, to think about, you know, if you could build your ideal GM, you know, you would take this and this and this from all these different people. But when you're actually looking at candidates, it's a little bit different. And so that's when we'll be looking for y'all to participate in our facilitated discussions around, you know, ultimately what's going to separate a good candidate from a great candidate? What's going to advance people? Um, and then in that final phase, finalists and offer navigation. Um, so that's where we're working with a much smaller pool of candidates. Um, you know, we've narrowed the funnel at that point. We're doing typically, we'll do the background checks and references in the background while we have a finalist interview occurring. Um, and then usually again, with background checks and references, we can make those available to the board. And in fact, I, I imagine you'll need to keep a copy on file, um, of the selected candidate. Um, but you know, typically with those, um, you know, we will, uh, you know, take those as a innocent until proven guilty kind of thing where, you know, we will only share sensitive candidate information back with the board if we feel like something has come up in a background check or a reference that, um, is urgently, you know, needs to be considered by the board and would affect someone's, um, employment there. Um, so over the course of the next, you know, 90 to 120 days as we complete this project, we'll be in touch with updates around, um, you know, where we are in the process. Um, logistics as we get around to finalist interviews and things like that, like we're bringing out of town candidates, you know, when are they going to meet? Where are they going to stay? That sort of thing. Any socializations we want to do, any other people we want them to meet, we'll kind of take care of that. Jessica, does anything?
I don't think so.
A million miles a minute there with everything else. Um, let me go ahead and pause there before I get into some of our action steps. Um, looking at this full view of the process, any questions about, um, the expectations of this group or, uh, you know, kind of how the process will begin?
I actually think I have a, a question probably for Angela.
Sure.
Um, so the candidate interviews that are held, are those an executive session?
Yes.
Okay. Mindful of everyone for, of that.
And I've been in the past.
And I've been in the past, and you, of course, you don't have to do it this way, but the board, correct me if I'm wrong, we started down here and then you went into executive session ups, you moved into it upstairs so that the candidates were not on view for everyone. They kind of were discreetly brought in, taken upstairs. So they weren't, you know, waiting out on the ground floor.
We interviewed them in this room.
I thought we did it in the video conference room. You did some in here.
I, I remember here.
And then we did some upstairs.
The follow-up, the second.
We're up there.
Second ones were video, uh, video upstairs rather than flying somebody.
Okay, those were upstairs. I thought you did some up there. Okay, I'm glad. But we were kind of trying to be discreet.
Everything was in here.
It might have been.
They had that screen upstairs and that little.
In person, here in this room.
And I think you try, with at least the out of town candidates, we tried to be slightly discreet with them.
Right.
We're also able to use the C-Biz offices if y'all are comfortable with that. And we have a lot of.
So the problem is that they have to go into executive session in an open meeting. So it'd mean you'd have to invite the public in and accommodate them and let them wait until it was over. So they have the right to see the board going in and out of the executive session.
Well, we can navigate that as we get there. And certainly, you know, if we, if it is more convenient to hold it at C-Biz, we're happy to open it up to people coming through and things like that. One of the key things I wanted to leave this meeting with is one of the, the next times that we'll need together as a whole group is that candidate presentation. And so based on the availability that was filled out in the polls, I wanted to see if everyone could confirm, does October 9th, 2024, from 10 to 11:30 work? For everyone's availability in the poll, it should work. But I wanted to make sure we could lock that down now because if nothing else, we want to have that on the calendar and we will present whoever we have available at that date. We may have some candidates still in process, but knowing, you know, the difficulties of scheduling and wanting to respect everyone's time, if we can just lock that down.
You can use that time against.
That's on the first page of the handout, but it's October 9th, 10 to 11:30. If there's no objection, we'll follow up with the calendar invite to you all so you have that on your calendars as well.
That's the second one, Steve.
Yes, that's correct. And we can do that here once again. All right, if that's good with everyone, so do that. Yep. And Angela, connect with you. Make sure we do that.
Right, so we'll have to, we'll have, we will be responsible for noticing it, the meeting up, and then it will be, you know, then we'll go into closed session.
Have to be at least the part of session.
Yes, and so where, where would the board like to have the closed session? Do you want it in this room or do you want it upstairs? Where would you like to move into?
Same here.
There's no candidate that's involved in that one, right? That's just.
We'll be discussing candidates, but no one will be here.
Okay, thank you.
And a room like this is typically good so you can have materials in front of you and, you know, we'll give you a big packet with everything you need. Wonderful. A couple more things, update wise. So wanting to make sure that we respect the board's trust and provide updates. Typically, what we do with clients for a search like this is we'll do a weekly update email on Fridays. If, and I'll, I'll describe what that's like and then y'all tell me if this sounds appropriate. So typically what we do there is there's one section that's just sort of a search summary. You know, we, we launched the search on September 2nd. You know, the job posting is active on all these places. To date, we've received 15 resumes. We've conducted three screens and two interviews. And those numbers would update, you know, on a weekly basis. We'll also typically use that email to include any search observations. So like of the 15 resumes we got, every single one is KCK or something like that. Or like, you know, another observation. You know, we're seemingly, a lot of the candidates we're getting are the number two to a GM somewhere else. You know, little observations like that from what we've been able to see. Sometimes there's not, you know, an immediate takeaway, you know, but usually we want to provide that information. And then that's usually our, on a week by week basis, if there's any coordination, we'll put something in there. Like if there's a little thing that we heard about, if there's a particular candidate question, somebody's connected to the board or referral, we'll discuss it in there. So if it's okay with y'all, that would probably be our preferred way of staying in contact. That also allows us to be kind of one directional and it won't trigger some of the, you know, board restrictions on communications here, where if you all have any individual questions, you can separately connect with us, that reply all and, you know, encounter any challenges there. The other thing that we can do is we can, you know, iterate. If we find that the weekly update email is not substantive enough or we actually do need time to connect, we're happy to shift that into a standing call or, you know, something else like that. But are there any other particular updates or pieces of information that the board would like to have in those kind of in-between points of the search? When we're not having those big touchpoints?
And can I just emphasize that that would be, like, you said it, it has to be one-way communication on those. And so you can't say, what does the, you know, what's more important to you aboard? That would have to be done in an open session. Also, those, depending on at what stage or you, that they would be an open record. So keep that in mind when you're composing them is that's very well be requested. And if they're just general, this is, you know, hey, it's going great or no, we're not having much interest, that would be an open record. If you say so-and-so applied, this is exciting, so-and-so applied, that is a, you know, candidate information personnel. Well, if they're not here yet, we get sticky, so let's keep it really.
Won't include any individual candidate information anyway, but that is good reminder to, well, we'll have those kind of intentionally be designed to be purely informational. Anything that is in there is just information for you all and other action items we will do elsewhere. But, you know, knowing especially some of y'all that have participated in the search process in the past, are there other pieces of information or deliverables that we could provide along the process that would be helpful for you to stay involved and to feel good about how the process is going?
When's the job description going to be complete? I know you're, you're having other discussions, but when do you anticipate that to be?
Hopefully in the next two weeks. I think the idea would be to be able to launch right after Labor Day. It's a good time, people returning to the office past the initial kind of back-to-school hurdle. So the hopes is that we've, we've gotten most of the conversations we need scheduled with BPU staff. And so ideally, actually, if we have a few minutes left here, I wouldn't mind using some of this time to schedule conversations with folks. Typically, we're looking at between 30 minutes to an hour. We can, 30 minutes at a minimum, an hour really is nice. If we finish early, we'll of course give people time back, but it's really, you know, just to get that open-ended conversation. And, you know, we really do invite candor. If there's something that you think is really important, we want to hear about it. If there's something that you think is, would make someone a really bad fit, we want to know about that as well.
Just to be sure, I want my meeting at CBS so I can have a meal.
So you can have lunch. Absolutely. Hey, we're happy to. So with these stakeholder interviews too, we're happy to accommodate whatever is most convenient for you all. So if it's a virtual call and that's just the most convenient thing to do, we're happy to do that. If you want us to come to your offices, if you want to come to our offices, happy to do that. But I think looking, especially if y'all don't have too many questions, I think in the next five-ish minutes here, we'll wrap up with what we need to cover. And so it could be great to use this time to just get that scheduled because that's really our main holdup on the job description is we'll get it drafted, especially some of the things that are going to be non-negotiables, like the pieces from the charter, some of the roles and responsibilities, those aren't going to change. But really those pieces around the strategic understanding, especially the messaging of the opportunity. You know, if, why, why would someone who's a talented individual who is having success in their current role, why might they want to come here? Those are some of the things that we'd ideally better like to tease out through the process.
How, how many staff members do you plan to meet with?
So we're meeting with most of the C-suite. We have Abby, Lori, Dennis, Bill, Ashley.
Angela.
Angela. Yeah, I think that's it on this. Yeah, sorry, Dennis, I think I mentioned Lori. And so, you know, what we'll do in those conversations is, is very similar. You know, we're not creating any opportunity for someone to choose their boss, you know? But we do want to make sure, especially from working style and things like that, knowing that someone's going to come in with a strong team that we want to keep in place. If there's, you know, personality things and working style things, you know, we very much want to take that into account. Ultimately, the decision is going to be made by the board. That's why the board exists. But, you know, so we're going to engage staff at the front end. The staff will not be participating in those later conversations where we're deciding on candidates to be forward.
And are you cautioning all employees that if they participate, they can't apply?
So we are not, so you can. We talked about that a little bit last time with internal candidates. On our end, we will put an internal candidate through the same exact process because ultimately we're still evaluating them. Obviously, just the consideration of they already work here is, is what we're considering and the delicacy there. You know, the other thing that I think the, the restrictions on this board will help insulate us on is confidentiality, just making sure that candidate information is protected. Especially here and, you know, in a, a political body like this, you know, making sure that, you know, we control the flow of information. And so another thing that's nice with us is we will be the kind of repository for all candidate information. So if everything's flowing through us, we'll also minimize the number of copies of resumes floating around or things like that. You know, the times at which it's appropriate to share candidate present, excuse me, candidate information will be these kind of large demarcated moments in a process like the candidate presentation or a finalist review. Okay, great. We talked about updates, we talked about communication channels. Jessica.
You just touched on the internal piece.
Yeah, we talked about internal candidates. So if we, at the meeting we had with the BPU staff, you know, the bill that asked Abby if he was, if she was interested, it made it sound like none of the people that we were talking to would be internal candidates. The only thing that we would do is if there was someone that we expected might be an internal candidate, maybe there's a question or two that we would take out to not give them any kind of undue advantage. But at this time, to our knowledge, no one from the leadership group is being considered as an internal candidate.
Everybody.
Well, I think she's being considered. I don't know.
Head of the unions or any of the employees?
Do you think we should talk to those people?
I think it'd be eye-opening, enlightening.
So, you know, we're, we're open to any internal or external stakeholders that y'all would think would befit us. But so, you know, the position that you just mentioned, that might be one that we don't necessarily do a formal stakeholder interview with, but we do just connect with that person. Here's also where we would defer to the, to the board. If there are any political considerations or investment considerations where someone would just appreciate being talked to and might enjoy feeling like they're part of the process, we're happy to set up a conversation, even if it's not going to be a formal stakeholder interview.
Yeah, Tom, I, I think that's a good instinct and maybe that less formal processes. The right fit there, but just making sure that that temperature.
They feel like they got some, they have some input in it.
And so who would those people be? The head of the union? We get that information?
Absolutely. Who else?
Neighborhood groups, any of the.
Certainly, if y'all don't feel like it's necessary, we, you know, we're not going to necessarily do it, but we're. So one thing also though is, is we, for these additional conversations, we won't, we won't allow ourselves to be held up by, you know, we'll prioritize the stakeholder interviews, getting the job description out. And so if we are unable to talk to the head of the union by the time we finish the job description, we're not going to let that hold us back. We will, you know, continue to proceed. Anyone else that we might want to talk to from YG, Yandot?
I was, I was thinking that county administrator, that our relationship with the county administrator has been hands-off. Like he, he, we've, we've been trying to communicate and so that communication has been, you know, sporadic, it hasn't been consistent, so we're concerned about that. So we're not sure if we want to.
Well, we've never, we've never done that in the past. Not that we have to do what we've done in the past, but we've pretty much independently chosen who we thought would be best to lead the utility, so I'm not in favor of that.
Okay, so for now, we'll plan on talking to, talking with the head of the union in a little bit more of an informal context. This door does remain open. So if, you know, in the next week or two, or as we're doing these stakeholder interviews, you are like, you know what, actually, it'd be nice if we just, you know, if this person felt like they were involved in the process. You know, we're happy to set up those conversations there as well. Okay, wonderful. Other questions? Otherwise, we can, we can start to do some scheduling and get everybody out here. You know, Mr. Wakes is hungry.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm open to whatever schedule you, you set me upon.
Would people mind if we just got out phones and?
No, I would actually prefer it.
Yeah, I figure one less thing to have to reach out to everybody about and.
Please, whatever we do, don't make me do a joint calendar fill-in with large swaths of time anyways. So those of us with day jobs.
Yeah.
Like I can't commit, like I put it out for that day, but I find out on four o'clock on Friday that we're.
You have something.
Eleven today, that was difficult, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Did anyone want to go first?
I was.
What, do you have any availability this week?
Yes.
How?
Tell me when.
What about Thursday?
Because she's fine.
How about Thursday?
Okay, and, and she reminded me, I, I do have a day job now. Yeah, we, I do cover on Thursdays. I do cover, I do cover on Thursdays, so Thursday would, would be, be a good time.
I could do Thursday afternoon this week and all day Friday this week.
Okay, yeah, let's see one at a time. We'll go, Mr. Wakes. Could you do Wednesday?
Wednesday, sounds good.
How about Wednesday at 1:00 PM?
The 21st, this coming, 21st, at what time?
1:00 PM.
A clock.
Ritual or in person? I'd probably prefer ritual. I'll be coming from.
Okay, okay, virtual sounds good. What time, what time?
1:00.
1:00.
All right, you got that one. We'll follow up with the calendar invites.
We have a BPU meeting that day, right?
Yeah.
And it starts at 4:30 that day.
Why do I have noon?
4:30 starting noon that day.
I don't know why I have noon. I don't know, maybe it's just.
Yeah, committee meeting?
It was just a, a.
Miss cons, how about you do Thursday?
I can do Thursday after lunch.
About 1:00 PM on Thursday? I can do later.
It needs to be just a little bit later.
Two.
Two o'clock on Thursday.
Thursday, the 26th, two o'clock.
Do very early next week, could you do Monday?
Sure.
So you're going to send me the invite?
Yep.
Mine's virtual as well.
Yeah, unless you prefer others.
No, I can do.
How about this, we'll, we'll send virtual invites to everybody and then respond back to us if you'd like that to be in person.
What, what do you use?
We use Teams. We can use anything though.
Music.
All I have is my phone.
I'm, we can do it over the phone as well if that's easier.
Okay.
Yeah. But so we'll.
I mean, I have other electronics, but I don't have any BPU on anything other than my phone.
Okay, phone is fine. I can do the 26th, I can't do 10 to 11.
Okay, how about 1?
1 works great. Right, 1 on the 26th.
About 9 on the 26th or 8 or 8:30.
Let's do 9.
9.
Who is the 1:00 PM 26th?
Robert Parker.
So Rose, that's 9:00 AM 26th.
Correct.
Okay. All right, Mr. Crummon, Mr. Haley. For my calendar purposes, I'd love if we looked at next week now.
Next week?
Yeah. It's the rest of our, we've got all the BPU staff ones this week and so I don't want to have to bump anybody. Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday?
You could not have any other time frame on the 21st when you have Mr. Wakes.
I could do.
One after, maybe, I don't know if you want to do two in a row because I, I traveled the next week, I traveled the 26th.
We've got Mr. Wake at 1:00 PM. I could do 3.
Fine.
Does that work for you?
Virtually, yeah.
3:00 PM on.
I'm pretty, I'm open, I'm retiring. My time is pretty free. So let's go, if you, you know, Monday or Tuesday, if you want to move me into that next week, that'd be fun.
Can we do Tuesday morning, the 27th with that?
How early? I, I'm retired, I don't. I can live.
Certainly not, not like that. Let's do 10. We'll let it sleep in a little bit. The 10 AM is my stuff. Wonderful. Okay. Well, we appreciate everybody being really efficient with their time. So we will send out a couple of calendar invites. We'll send the hold for October 9th, the candidate presentation. Please let us know, uh, as far in advance is if you think there'll be a conflict. That day, we're happy to turn that into a virtual, uh, attendance option for anyone if they have a logistical conflict. But I, you know, that's when we really want your input. We want you to weigh in. We're going to be looking at candidates. So that's going to be really important to, to try to maintain.
And so the board, if they have a rule that no, um, attendance virtually in the exec session, so that would have to be changed.
We, we do and.
That's up to the board.
Right. And so I'm literally looking at this schedule and I have a surgery scheduled in late October.
Okay.
And so, um, I don't know what that's going to look like because I, late October, I, we don't have dates, so I, I don't know. But to the extent that we proceed down the schedule and there's an executive session that I cannot attend in person because of surgery, would the board waive the requirement that I could attend executive session remotely?
Absolutely. That would require a vote.
I, I don't know. So I, I don't know. So if it would require a vote, I know.
Yes, it would, or it would require a motion to waive the rules the night of the meeting and then a vote.
I would be fine with that.
Because like I could just reschedule the surgery again, I guess. I mean, which is not a big deal.
I can't reschedule in October as well. So, and I couldn't remotely be in Europe. So I will.
So what we'll try to do is, is get as much done on that October 9th date. And then what will come after that, that would require y'alls time is participation in finalist interviews. So we determine who all will be participating in those and when. But, you know, certainly we can work around those days because we're working with a smaller candidate group. But so we'll try to schedule that as, as in advance as possible. Certainly at the latest, leaving that candidate presentation on October 9th, uh, exiting that meeting will have interview slots scheduled or blocked off. So at a minimum, you know, we have some time held around. Um, if that means that we have to go a little bit further into November, totally fine. On our end, um, but we'll make sure, just as we, you know, kind of had our next meeting set at this meeting, we'll make sure we don't leave that. And, and, you know, certainly with the timeline that we have here, we should be able to, you know, if we can have, you know, most of our work done before November, you know, that kind of Thanksgiving time, that holiday time, that's already a little bit slower. If we're just handling finalists, then that's usually a pretty clean time where we can set up between two to four interviews with the board for finalists. Um, and then, you know, we're doing reference checks and backgrounds and then likely we're looking at a, you know, January 1 start date.
You talk about the pool of candidates. What, what is your expectation? What do you think, what do you think that we will get as a pool?
In terms of number?
Numbers.
That's a good question. I think for a search like this, I would want us to be in the 30 to 50 range. You know, in terms of number of candidates, partly because this is not a, you know, it's called general manager, but it's not an extremely general profile of role. There are going to be some hard and fast constraints. So this is not one where we're going to obsess too much about quantity, you know, where we, we were going to feel like, oh, wow, we have 200 applications. Is that incredible? If, you know, we're going to disqualify 150 of them from the jump, that doesn't, you know, do anything for us.
This is a utility field and they're not, you know, but we found out from the last time we did it, there's not that many, there's not that large.
Right.
Of a pool of people that are qualified to be general, general manager, but.
You weren't too pleased with the search for him either. So.
Do what?
I said, but you weren't too pleased with the search for him either. So.
Oh, we were, yeah, we were okay with them. They were just, they, they get, we got with, that's why I'm saying, they were, they specialized in utilities. And we got a very slim pool to pick from. And they specialized in you. That was all they did was utilities. And they had a huge, I mean, they had a large, you know, bank of things to draw on for the utilities. And you're not, you're not necessarily specialized in utilities. What do you think? Are you, I mean.
So we, we.
I can see it's not getting anybody.
Government searches. I think, you know, uh, I, I certainly can't claim to have the level of search expertise to accurately predict just how many candidates we'd get to, to a real level of specificity. But from our perspective, we would want to feel that we had a robust pool, but this is not one where we would be too worried about just big numbers. If we have 20 and we feel like there are five to seven in there that are really strong, that we think at the end of the day could get an offer, that's fine by us. You know, I think our problem is if we have 20 and we don't think that there's a winner in there, then that tells us we need to do more research. Um, and so that's also where those weekly updates are going to be helpful where, you know, if we're seeing, hey, we've had it out and it's like, you know, the same three people, um, you know, then that's when we'll, you know, we won't just stay looking at that number. We'd start to think, okay, do we need to, uh, you know, deploy additional resources? You know, a lot of that also is going to come down to what is the barrier? Are we not getting applications because is it compensation? Is it just that there's a, you know, small pool of people who are, you know, GMs for utilities? Is it just that there's only so many people to play with? Is there something about the BPU? Are people, is there a brand issue? Is there something that people are saying, I don't want to work here? So we'll report all that back to the board. And then part of what, you know, you get working with Cbis is we have a placement guarantee. So we may not have a placement occur along the timeline that we set out, but we, you know, we remain committed to our partners. So if we go through the process and we feel like we've not found that person, if it means extending without any change in our fees or anything like that, we'll continue working. So we'll continue to, to take that in and we'll discuss the options available. So if we feel like, hey, we're really missing, you know, just the depth of experience. A lot of the people that we're getting are more in the five to seven years of utility experience. We'd like to be more in 10, 15. So, you know, then we discuss, you know, how do we go and find those people? Or if we're unable to find people like that, would the board accept, you know, a little bit less experience? But, you know, maybe they've had an academic background where they've spent some more time and, you know, some of the science involved or, you know, some of the other considerations there.
Can I just ask a good general question about something you've already covered?
Sure.
If you, like, if the board decided on a personality test or a presentation, is it like a specific presentation or we're just looking for presentation skills? Do you have a?
Likely we would come up with something specific. So we have tools that we've implemented in the past. We've also created, uh, you know, bespoke assessments and things like that. So, you know, for example, if we want to look at communication skills, it's not just a presentation. Here in the GM seat, it's a very specific kind of reporting you do to a board. And so we might say not just, you know, speak for two minutes about your career. We might say like, you know, we can either actually pull some real data or real numbers or even fabricate something like, let's say, you know, there's an unexpected challenge and the BPU reports this. There's a dip in something, you know, how would you present this to the board? And, and come up with some parameters there. So those are going to be the results of the thoughtful conversations we have with you all. Because another thing that we want to be sensitive to is, you know, in the same way that we're being thoughtful about how we use the board time, we also want to be useful with candidate time. We don't want to make them do three hours of stuff that doesn't help us make a decision. You know, we find out like candidate A's favorite color is blue and they learned how to ride a bike at age six. You know, that's not necessarily going to help you separate. And so if we are going to ask them to do something, we want it to be meaty and we want it to be something that'll help this group make a decision. So for, for example, another thing with a presentation is maybe we don't actually need you to give a presentation, but we would like to see an example of something you've done in the past. So from your career, a writing sample, a, a talk you gave, if there's video, you know, these are things that we can collect. So we'll also determine at what stage in the process do we want to collect this? We often don't do assessments at the front end because we're still cutting a lot of people. And, you know, we don't want to administer 70 assessments to, you know, a bunch of people who won't necessarily matriculate through the process. So that's why we're thoughtful about it per finalists and things like that.
Okay.
Um, and, and we have connections with a number of vendors and assessment providers and things like that. So if there's specific assessments we want to deploy, you know, there's personality assessments, there's kind of work map assessments. There's, you know, more competency based assessments, more technical assessments. Um, and so we can choose when and where we'd like to deploy those based on, on what evaluation process we ultimately determine. Any other questions? We have business cards that we can hand out if needed, um, but we want to just emphasize that, you know, we are here to act as your agents and to make sure that the BPU gets what it needs at the leadership level. And so if you have additional thoughts outside of this, you have additional referrals, questions, you know, we're hyper responsive people. And so we're always available if you have a quick concern. Um, and so please don't hesitate to reach out. And with that, 11:59. How about that, y'all? Well, thank you also. It's a pleasure to meet you and we're looking forward to continuing the conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd probably take a business.
With my big wires.
Rose, I moved to adjourn.
Wait a second. It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn. Roll call?
Roll call Gonzalez.
Aye.
Brenneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
That motion carries this meeting as adjourned.